Okay.
Okay, so I guess what we'll do is we'll apologize, Jim. We'll open the public hearing. We'll turn it over to you to talk about the CDBG.
Hey, thank you, Mayor and council members. I can be pretty brief. I think the materials you have are fairly straightforward. Since you've done this once before in October.
HUD announced that the city was getting a second allocation of CARES Act funding. Again, back from March, the CARES Act enacted at the end of March. Provided you initially with about $286,000 of community development block grant money for COVID relief efforts across the city. Excuse me. And in October HUD had awarded you a second allocation of $162,525 from the same legislation. We, working with the mayor's office and many of the nonprofits that currently are kind of in your community development system and provide vital public services to the Glen's Falls community, worked up a proposed budget. This money from the CARES Act is mostly suitable for nonprofits that do vital public services. It isn't something where we can put into construction or street repaving or some of the other block grant projects that you're used to from your your regular HUD funding. But it lends itself well to nonprofits as a delivery mechanism for various senior services, youth services after school help. Waithouse, for example, dealing with homeless and troubled youth, kind of specialty populations like that, that probably are really struggling during COVID. So we put together the budget. It's it's taken a little bit of time to get this in front of you as a council, partly because we wanted to to see how the implementation of the initial CARES Act money and where there were some unmet needs in the community. And the mayor had also suggested that we look at a couple of nonprofits that had have never received CDBG money from the city before, like Father Peter Young Industries that has a reintegration facility on Crandall Street. And a few other nonprofits that were were brought to our attention. So I think this this budget spreads this money out really well. It gets to a lot of nonprofits that you're used to seeing receive city funding, but also some new ones. It deals with the schools backpack program with another infusion of of support as kids are struggling with food issues while they're remote learning. It bolsters the senior center and a little bit of money for the Conkling Center to do COVID related programming and help for seniors. And we swing back with Waithouse and the youth center for some additional funding again for for youth. So I think it covers a broad spectrum of your city residents that are in need. We're also going to try to steer some of these resources to Community Action and Family Service Association that both administer housing, emergency housing payment programs. And maybe allow them to have some additional cash to deal with rent and mortgage payments of of people that they would income qualify who are struggling with housing payments. That's an activity that Ed Bartholomew and I had talked about in the spring when COVID hit. But we had decided that it was not an endeavor that the city should take on by itself and create a whole new infrastructure to run that kind of program when there are agencies out there that already handle certifying tenants or homeowners and provide emergency housing payments. So rather than create some new infrastructure for the city to run a temporary housing program like that, we're going to work with Community Action and Family Service Association. Because we know people are struggling with rent and utility payments as the pandemic goes on and on and on through the rest of this year. And then we're going to also, we intend to provide a little bit of a boost to the Small Business Recovery Fund. That's a city program that Ed started and was created to address small business relief. Things like rent and working capital for small businesses in the city to keep them alive. To date, we've we've provided deferred loans to 13 businesses through that program. And this will give that initiative a little bit more cash to run again, run through the the rest of the pandemic on your economic development side of things. So I think it's a well rounded budget. I think it's the only CARES Act money left you're going to get from HUD as far as I can tell. But I think the city's done pretty well with the CARES Act. And we'll have to see what the new stimulus proposals, you know, how that ends up with something different maybe for the city if Washington ever gets their act together. But this, going back to March, I think the city has stretched these funds out fairly well. And this would again help keep a lot of segments of the city in good shape, or at least recovering as best as we all can from effects of COVID. So again, help keep a lot of it back to the council or the public for comments as
In good shape, or at least
and get HUD approval.
We all can from effects of COVID. So again, help keep a lot of it back to the council or the public for
A little bit of a delay there, but
That was weird.
Yeah.
Anyone have any questions?
Jim, I just have one question. First of all, thank you for all the work you've done for us. Appreciate it very much. Can you tell me if the vet house that's over on, oh God, it's over by the old Just Water by
Hind Street.
Hind Street. Are they on the list or were they on the last group of lists from previous years?
I haven't seen them on a recent CDBG budget in a couple of years at least, at least since I've been working with with the mayor and Ed.
But that doesn't mean that we can't engage with them about their needs in the future or for for your upcoming regular CDBG allocation in terms of of the 2021 money that's going to be announced and, you know, in the coming weeks. So if you have an ongoing program, it's I'm certainly happy to engage with have not been recently funded and see where we can, you know, meet some needs that way.
Well, and the the director is asking to meet with me on Thursday to have lunch. And he didn't mention this, but I'm wondering if that's why he might be in a great. So no need to do anything, Jim. I'll I'll let the mayor know and and discuss it with him after I meet with with him on Thursday and see if if that's what he's making a request. I'll obviously make no promises, but listen to what he has to say and bring it to the mayor for you guys' consideration. Okay?
That's good.
And when would that next allocation be if he was to be considered or if that program, I should say, was to be considered? When would that be?
So normally with HUD, anytime between the end of March, we would, the city would be putting together your your 20, your next regular budget. So now is a good time.
Vet ideas or needs from the community.
Great. And one last thing, Jim, could could you look back at our records at least and let me know maybe more than a couple of years ago what their funding was at? Again, I won't really discuss this with him, but it would be great if you could send me an email and I knew what that was just to have that understanding. Again, he might even want to be talking to me about something else. I don't know. I'm just thinking that he might be having it on his mind to make us an ask and it would be good for me to know what the history had and when we stopped funding them. Okay? Thank you. And again, I, you know me, I I won't, I'm not going to make any commitments. I'll let, I'll if he has a case to make and it has a request to make, I'll just collect that request and bring it to to you and the mayor for consideration. Okay.
Super. Appreciate it.
Jim, I have a question. Those small business grants, are they still, if people come to me and they're looking for them, is there still money's out there for them?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Okay. And is that like a set amount? Do you have that?
Scott, so far it we've, the maximum was 7,500 as a forgivable loan. We haven't changed that yet.
We might have to increase that, tweak that if we aren't moving the money quick enough. But so far, people have been pretty appreciative of that amount to pay rent or do whatever they need to, so.
All right. Thank you.
Jim, what are we, what's the qualifications for a small business? What's our definition?
Jim, it's basically 20 employee, full time employees or less. There's a revenue cap of, I think, two and a half million. That's that's pretty large for most small businesses located in the city. And they need to, with these funds, even though it's COVID relief, they need to at least retain
one part time position as a result of getting the fundings. That's a pretty easy standard because they're either bringing back an employee or or keeping someone on payroll. And there's a few few types of business Ed didn't really want to fund dealing with entertainment and some some sort of, I'd say prohibited, but you know, some desirable activities, but otherwise, otherwise it's generally anyone out there that's under 20 employees.
Great. Thanks, Jim.
Is there any other questions for Jim? Okay, seeing that there's none, I will close the public hearing.
Diane Collins had a question for him.
Um, it's about the COVID vaccine. Seniors without computers are having a really difficult time because you have to register with a pharmacy. It's going to be more vaccines available in pharmacy, but I wonder if any of the funds could be used to outreach, maybe the senior apartments, just to make sure that the seniors that can't go online have assistance and registering with the pharmacies.
That's a A super question. It would, the the response, I mean, I know the Conkling Center, I think, used prior CARES Act money from the city to do something with technology. And I don't know if they were
And the senior center too.
Laptops to help seniors access web services or or things to help their employees work remotely, which would help them provide better services to seniors. But that, but technology in that respect is eligible as as a COVID response. It would just have to go through one of these nonprofits to to kind of put the senior community and figure out how to how to help seniors get access that way. But yes, upgrading technology that way would be eligible.
If the Conklin Center is getting some of the funds, I'll just stop by there and ask if they're doing any outreach for the seniors in the apartments. I know seniors that are active in the senior center get assistance, but I'm my neighbor, for example, didn't use a computer. And so I've been online trying to get an appointment for her.
Right. And I can tell you, if Kim Bryn or the Conkling Center wanted to propose that as a use of these funds to the city, we would certainly endorse that. That would certainly be eligible.
Is there any other questions?
Claudia, Claudia would like to ask a question.
Actually, Mayor, I didn't have a question, but I wanted to respond to Diane's comment, not necessarily about the funding for outreach, which I think is a great point, but I wanted to say that the county did use some of their vaccine allocation, the county health department for vaccinating seniors who live in congregate housing. And I I thought that included not just nursing homes, but some of our downtown senior apartments. And also, if there are seniors who need help and they can't use the internet or don't have a computer, they can call the county office of aging to get assistance via the phone.
Um, yes, I knew that and I shared that information, but it's a long wait. I haven't heard.
Okay.
Thanks.
Well, I'll pass that feedback along. Is it a long wait getting the office of aging to return their phone call?
Oh, they're great. No, they're great. They answer themselves. They take the name and phone number to call back.
I I know there's still a long wait for getting the doses because we just don't have the allocation of vaccines. Okay, thanks Diane. So thank you, Mayor.
So let me just make a comment about our senior high rises. The 75 year old and up have been vaccinated. There are about 53 people that are 65 and older that we have the list. We have our fire chief and we're working with the county and the director of the housing group to try to get those people vaccinated. We have over 25 firefighters who are ready at the calling. If someone comes up with a program like we're trying to do, they can go out to the seniors. We're all on board, but that has not been implemented yet. We're we're in the background. We're ready to do it. Let's come about. So is there anyone, anyone else that wants to make a comment about the CDBG proposal? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and I'll open our regular meeting. And we like to do the pledge of allegiance and Mr. Collins is going to lead us tonight with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so I know we have a couple of people from the public that are here. And I will open the floor for public comments if you have anything you'd like to discuss. Go ahead, Robin.
Hi, 202 Glen Street. Do we have an end time and end date when that project's going to be finished? Yeah, I know, Scott, you would love to know too.
Yes.
What I had had some feedback over the week of a handicap person trying to access, that's the only way to get onto our block is right at that corner. And it's been blocked off for a good amount of time now. And I and I think it'd be nice if they could find a way to, if nothing else, if they can't wrap up their project, to let the handicap people use the sidewalk again.
Absolutely. I'll check on it tomorrow, Robin.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Robin, I think I I think there's a ramp right next to, like, right where our ramp starts. So they don't have to start at the corner if they look.
But isn't there, oh, okay. Isn't there a a gate around that still?
No, they took that down recently.
Okay.
So I I had a lady in a wheelchair come in last Tuesday and she said, we're the only place you can get into. So
Okay. Well, good.
We can get in.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else from the public? Yeah, Diane.
Um, I think I sent you a copy, Dan and Jim Clark. I have a proposal. I have a proposal to make to the council members. The proposal is for you to comment on climate warming at each council meeting. And I've got something to read here. We're in a worldwide worsening climate crisis that is not talked about very much in our city. Climate warming was not mentioned at my Zoom church service on Sunday or at the last Glen's Falls YouTube council meeting or at the monthly Zoom NAACP meeting. And you get the idea. And yet, climate warming is a planetary disaster with drowning island countries, drought driven migrations, acid oceans, mass extinction of birds and animals, ongoing devastating, devastating extreme weather. People see the climate news about Texas, Biden's climate team and goals and upcoming geoengineering experiment in Sweden, but often don't connect the news to our community. Who's paying attention here? Who's talking about it? Who's taking actions? I think our community needs to know that you, our council members, have been paying attention and taking actions right here to mitigate climate warming and reduce our fossil fuel use. Our two committees, the Clean Energy Community Committee and the Climate Smart Community Task Force have fostered energy wise and successful win win projects with NYSERTA wins for reducing fossil fuel used locally and financial wins for the city with earned financial awards. The public needs to know, not just with an occasional newspaper article, but by talking about it, the climate crisis bi weekly at council meetings. It's so real. It's so important. Let the public know that you are paying attention, that you are taking climate warming very seriously with your plans and projects. Not to scare people, but to address the reality of the climate crisis. It's too important not to. If done earnestly, I think you can tread lightly, but meaningfully. And that we all can help. You might consider making suggestions for how the community can respond to climate warming. What actions we citizens can take to temper our fossil fuel use. As part of this brief segment on climate action, we talk about at council meetings. Maybe each of you could share what you are doing. And then you might also consider adding climate action to the Glen's Falls City website. So to close, you were elected to make sound decisions for our city. Mitigating climate warming may be the wisest decision of all. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you.
Thanks, Diane.
Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak?
Mayor, can I just respond to that real quickly?
Sure.
Um, Diane, thank you very much for that. You know, I think, as you know, we've been working together on a lot of these things for a couple of years now. And I am really encouraged by, you know, everything that the council has been doing for the last five or six years, at least as long as I've been working with them. I think you're right that we probably could do a better job getting the word out to the public, but I think and I don't want to speak. I know Bill Collins as the Councilman Collins as the Chair of the Sustainability Committee talks about what the council's doing almost, you know, every meeting. I mean, this is a, there's a committee meeting. So although there might be individual things that we could sort of talk about, there is, by the way, you know, there are pages on the website that talk about that. But more importantly than what I just wanted to mention briefly is that, I'm not sure if you're aware, but we finally did get our Climate Smart Communities Grant approved, I guess, by the state a couple of weeks ago. And one of the things we're going to be doing as part of that is developing a climate action plan. And obviously, that's going to be sort of a document formed by and large by the the city council, among other participants. But what that means is it's sort of, it's a way for the city to incorporate, let's call it sustainability components, but with respect to climate specifically, sort of plug that into the DNA of the city's actions going forward. So that notwithstanding, you know, I'd like to think that the city's recent appointment for me, you know, as a sustainability guy moving into economic development sort of indicates that those are sort of two sides of the same coin from the city's perspective. And I don't want to put thoughts or words in anybody's mouths, but that's at least the way I'm interpreting it. So, you know, you and I could talk more about that, but I think you make some good points about how we can get the word out a little bit better. Thanks.
I know the the states come up with different action plans. Many of them look terrific. There's money available as we as we meet the goals. But I think it would be good for Bill addresses just the words of climate warming, just to bring it, bring it out, make it real. And then each meeting, maybe make a short statement about what what our initiatives might be in the Climate Smart Community work or something that the Sustainability Committee is doing. I just think it would connect us to the people more, the the few people that perhaps listen into the meetings. But it would go in the minutes and it might go in the website. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public that would like to speak?
I just wanted to mention really quickly, Diane, that on our city website, if you look under your government, there is a section that says City of Glen's Falls Green Initiative information. And there are several initiatives that have been put there and we we can definitely add more, but it is prominently featured under the government section of our website.
Can you measure if people look at that, Diane? Is there any way of tracking that?
Um, I don't know the answer to that question, actually. I don't know if Megan, if you know that, but no. Okay. I'm not sure.
Well, it's good that it's there. I haven't paid attention to it.
Okay. No one else from the public would like to speak? So then we'll go on to committee reports. We'll start out with Ms. Reed. You're muted.
I'm sorry, Mary.
Read, read my lips. No, I I have none.
Mr. Campenell.
No report.
Mr. Collins.
I do have a report. I think Jeff stole my thunder, though. We're the, this is, it's okay, Jeff. I'm just teasing. So the Sustainability Committee has been meeting. We've, I can't remember if it was just before or just after, but we've had the department head meeting. We're collecting the the equipment for the equipment for our lights, our new LED streetlights are starting to arrive in Glen's Falls. We have a final plan for our, the 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 gateways that our our technology system will run on. We have a plan from fiber that was submitted to our department head, Tom and Steve Gersler for their review and approval. That was the last hurdle we really have for that piece. We, I know that we've also been in communication with Chief Schrammel and I believe Chief Beauclaire as well about our parking sensors. So that is all progressing very quickly forward. The real thing we're doing now as far as the new streetlights and the and the pilot parking program and the technology all tied in together is the weather breaking. So let's, let's, let's pray for spring. And as that happens, we will be seeing the fruits of a couple of years now worth of labor come to a, come to fruition. So that is all.
Thank you. Ms. Palmer?
For building in codes, as I mentioned last week, we're just doing, working remotely, but JD is compiling a list of resources for homeowners who could be at risk of becoming bacon. And we have a pretty good list now. I know I've reached out to you, Jim, and Jeff and Claudia and several people, but if anyone has anything else, please send it my way because I think we're getting ready to finalize that. That's the only thing.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Endavry?
I have no report.
And Mr. Clark?
The Special Projects Committee will be meeting soon to chat with Mr. Jim Murphy about a presentation of a dog park parks in the city of Glen's Falls. Starts with Facebook page and there's been quite a bit of interest in some suggestions. And so the Special Projects Committee is going to meet with him to get, give what he has compiled and we will keep everybody informed as we report and Mayor, certainly I did pass on that hard conversation. And so he's aware of where we think we should go and things like that. Stay tuned for that. That's it, man.
Okay, thank you. So we'll go to our resolutions under voice vote, a resolution approving the minutes of the February 9th, 2021 meeting of the Glen's Falls Common Council. Number two is a resolution accepting the city historian's 2020 annual report.
Some hope.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there any resolution under roll call vote you'd like to pull for further discussion? Number three is a resolution approving improving an encroachment permit as approved by Mayor Hall on February 8th, 2021, subject to retroactive common council approval per city code 189-19B2, RL Chase Builders to close the sidewalk in front of 2020 Glen Street to install a front canopy from February 15th to February 26th, 2021. Four is a resolution authorizing controller to decrease fund expense line A23410-1,000 Fire Department Personnel Services by $12,380 and increase by twelve thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars and increase general fund expense line A two, three, four, one, zero dash four, four, zero, four, fire department conventions and training by six thousand dollars. Increase A two, three, four, one, zero dash four, four, zero, seven, fire department medical expenses by one thousand eighty dollars and increase eighteen eight, two, three, four, one, zero dash four, three, one, five, fire department uniform supplies by fifty three hundred dollars. Five is the resolution authorizing the controller to decrease general fund expense line A one, one, nine, nine, zero, nine thousand contingency by three hundred and fifty dollars and increasing general fund expense line A one, one, four, three, zero dash four, four, seven, nine, Personnel Department, other contracted services by three hundred and fifty dollars. Six is a resolution approving and author authorizing submission to the U.S. Department, excuse me, of Housing and Urban Development HUD, a substantial amendment to the city's community development board grant, CDBG fifth year annual action plan for fiscal year two, zero, one, nine, CDBG program budget to add an allocation to new CDBG dash CB three funding from HUD as enacted under Federal Cares Act in the amount of one hundred and sixty two thousand, five hundred and twenty five dollars in accordance with applicable CDBG program resolutions. Seven is a resolution scheduling a public hearing regarding the proposed Glens Falls Police Department reformer reinvention plan for seven twenty Tuesday, March ninth, twenty twenty one, and authorizing the city court to make public notice thereof. Eight is a resolution approving community development manual payments of eleven thousand, fifty three dollars and ninety nine cents. And nine is a resolution warrant.
Some move.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Councilwoman Large Reed?
Yes.
Councilwoman Eppenell?
Yes.
Councilman Collins?
Yes.
Councilwoman Palmer?
Yes.
Councilman Endaverry?
Yes.
Councilman Clark?
Yes.
Resolutions passed. Old business, Ms. Reed.
Um, I I believe that you are all aware of the fact that the current green space at three, three, three owned by three, three, three Glen is is the contract vendee is on the agenda for the planning board's next meeting. I think it would behoove any of you with an interest in that matter to to get your opinions known and to the mayor prior to that meeting so that if the city is interested in appearing at that many meeting, it can do so with authority. Thank you.
Mr. Campenell.
I don't have anything.
All right, Mr. Collins.
Uh, I don't have anything other than a question. Jane, can you explain? I I thought that that property that we were thinking we were going to use that with for the, um, as a possible area for to be included in our into our grant, our downtown DRI grant.
We, um, we as a city have made a request to the state to allow us to amend the DRI in a in a minimal way so as to include that the the possible purchase of that property in our the current boundary of the DRI literally goes to the edge of Glen Street, but does not include that part. So it would it would take a modification of the DRI in order to do that, and we have made that request. But, uh, you know, three, three, three Glen, this is private property and three, three, three Glen is in is interested in selling it. So therefore, um, a year ago, they entered into a contract with the developer who was making the current proposal. And although the terms of that, under the terms of that contract, that contract has expired, there have been ongoing discussions between the two parties that make it possible for the the applicant to come before the planning board with the idea that he would be the successful purchaser of that property under the terms of this contract that he has from a year ago. So he is going forward with that. Um, he has modified his proposal, but he is going forward with that thought. And, um, and that is happening in early March, as you know. So, uh, the question being is the city interested in in pursuing that under those circumstances. So you need to, you know, let the mayor know what you would, you know, what where you stand and what your interests are in that regard so that we can either appear at the planning board meeting as the city and speak as to what our intentions are. You know, or what our desires would be, um, or to not appear. We can't, you know, we can't be bifurcated in that. You can appear as your own self, but to speak for the city, we would need to have you know, have council interest. So.
And not even if the planning board, even if it went through the planning board. So that's another point of confusion. Thank you for that explanation. I appreciate it, but wouldn't that even if the planning board approved that that concept, wouldn't that come back to the city council for either approval or rejection? Or do I misunderstand?
In in reality, um, the planning board has independent authority to approve the plan to to approve the proposal. And should, uh, should the proposal be approved? I believe that the developer would then go ahead and purchase based on planning board approval, which they he could receive in early March, go ahead and fulfill the terms of the contract and buy the property. That does not mean that there won't be further hoops that he might have to, the developer might have to go through. But, um, by then there would be investment. He would, I mean, he would have, you know, I'm I'm not saying you wouldn't have, you know, that he might have difficulty getting curb cuts on a on Route nine from the state or on Bay Street from, um, you know, there but his current plan, he's now says, his application says he will not require any zoning variance variances in order to do his the new newly proposed build. So the city's the the city's interaction with his plan is very is potentially very limited.
Thank you.
I I thought by us asking for this amendment sort of indicated that we were staying interested in the property. Correct? Or am I?
So so um, I we have, we have not. We there hasn't been no resolution from this council stating that we are we that we will be, you know, putting forth an offer to the owners of of three, three, three. We we have not, we have indicated that we are in interested in green development, but and that we're interested in the DRI being extended to that parcel so that we can do that. But in the meantime, commerce marches on. So, um, while we while we wait for the state, this may this this may move faster than we have. So hence the reason I am I am bringing this up under old business because yes, we have discussed it and yes, we have indicated that that's our interest, but we haven't done anything. And, um, and, uh, your opportunities may be foreclosing. Not not just yours, our opportunities. I don't mean it that way, but each each of you needs to, you know, let the mayor know.
Why? I would ask you to get a hold of my office.
Yep. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, where were we?
We were old business and I was your first call. Aren't you glad?
Jim Campenell, old business.
Didn't have any, no.
Bill Collins?
I have none.
All right, Ms. Palmer.
Our ice lantern contest closed and we have a little survey up for voting on the the people that entered. So I just wanted to let people know, um, there were five people that actually entered the contest with sending us a picture, but there were a bunch more that were dropped off at the park. So you have until Friday. That's, oh, and also I had mentioned the Arbor Day Foundation Tree City Grant. And I, Mayor, I don't know if you saw that I sent it back to you. It just needs a signature. So and then it's ready to go.
I'll do it in the morning.
That's it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Mr. Endaverry?
Uh, I just wanted to say that the La Rose Gardens project is underway. The demo work is going on right now and I'm excited for it to see the final results, but sure, it's going to take us a while, but it's going to be exciting when it's all said and done.
Nice.
Go forthward.
Yeah.
Mr. Clark?
Um, well, uh, we are going to attempt to have another police reform public meeting on Thursday, the twenty fifth at six thirty. People may participate via the city's YouTube channel. The group will be conducting a meeting via Zoom and participants can weigh in with questions and comments via YouTube. This where we were making a second attempt at trying to direct with the public on the proposal for the police reform after, um, some heinous acts were hijacking our our public forum we had last week. It was just atrocious and we're going to have it one way or another. We have to stand out in this out in the snow to do it. We will have it one way or another. But, um, this will be our second attempt and, um, and we'll move forward from there. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. I appreciate your your effort on that. And that was a a situation that was not good and you know, hopefully we'll be able to pull this next one off. New business, Ms. Reed.
I have none.
Mr. Campenell?
Nothing tonight.
Okay, Mr. Collins?
I have none.
And Ms. Palmer?
I have none.
Mr. Endaverry?
I have none.
Mr. Clark?
I have none.
Okay, is there anyone from the public that would like to make a comment? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. See ya.
Diane, everybody.
Hi.